Have a conversation about how you're going to talk about these goals and meet them without discussing the budget at committee meetings throughout the year, not just in one session in September. And it's this massive thing, you know, in the morning to the afternoon. And some of these big budget items, I think, sir, need to be discussed in committee meetings where there's... I'm having a little difficult time understanding why it is so difficult for people to see. And when you did finally publish the budget, I appreciate that, on your website, it's kind of buried back in the finance and tax section. Most people don't even go. So, I don't know. I'll be frank, I lack confidence in the budget. There's numbers that are wrong, and there's estimates that I think are exaggerated or padded. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, I have no other requests for in-room participation in the first public comment. That will lead me to ask for community media's assistance to open us up. Anyone online like to speak for the first session?
Yeah, those joining us via Zoom are welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
No? Okay, I'll close the first public comment portion of the meeting and move into agenda item three, that being approval... Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm missing something, and that would be the reading into the record that we did have a executive session this evening. I'll let our solicitor tell you why.
Council met from 6:30 to about 6:50 involving matters that are otherwise privileged under Section 708A 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you. At this time, I will move us into agenda item three, that being the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion required?
Yeah, I have a... Is that all through 314? One through 14?
I believe it is, yeah. It goes to page two, so 301 to 314.
How much is the consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything you'd like to pull and discuss separately?
Well, I would. I think there's two or three here. On 306, the library board appointments, is there not a pool of people to pick from for those appointments? I mean, is nobody's wanting to do it, or...
Let me just ask this. Do you have others that you want to pull from the agenda? Because I'd rather establish that and then get into the actual items that we'll pull, say, to talk about.
Okay. Then 3.6, 3.7, and 3.9.
So 06, 07, and 09?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Bill, could we have...
Anyone on this side?
Yeah, but I want Tim just to speak because I was really concerned on those delinquent taxes, okay? I did ask him...
Hang on. Right now, I'm just asking if there's anything you want to pull. We'll get into the discussion.
Can we?
Yeah. What number? Give me a number.
That would be 3.3, current and prior year tax means and exonerations.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the left side? Anything else on the right side? Okay. Let us discuss these items separately. All right, starting with item 303, that being the current year tax exonerations, and I believe you asked solicitor to shoulder us to address that.
Yes, please.
Suggest her shoulders.
I need... Tim, I was just at the point where I had gotten a previous email, and it wasn't... There was something... There was an error in it when it came across. And I look, I thought, wow, that's all that were in the rear with the people, you know, that are in the arrears. And then today, I found time to really get into that part of it, and I was like, wow. So we were close to almost a million. We were 900 and some thousand. Was that exceedingly high for us for the year?
If you're asking me that question...
I don't know.
I'm going to...
Darlene, I look at it fairly often. It's that all the time.
Are you serious? Because I thought this was the first time I saw it that high.
No.
No, actually...
You can look any time you want. You could go online, York County, PA.
Yeah.
And...
Well, I had all of them listed.
The list is updated every month for the entire county. And the stuff that's Hanover Borough specific, if you go through the list, the partial numbers have a 6, 7 prefix.
Well, I rely on getting it at the end of the year. And so I had questions for Tim, and maybe the rest, like Greg or the new ones on, have a question. But I did on... Some of them were very high. Is this an accumulation of just the one year or an accumulation of more than one year?
Yes, for the year.
Just the one year?
And actually, when I met with the tax collector...
Okay.
We did better this year than we've done in previous years.
Really?
Yes.
Well, you've made me happy.
Yes. The school district didn't fare as well as we did, but we fared very well this year.
Okay. So they'll go on... And I asked you, Tim, whether a person who owes those taxes will have a period of time to pay in, even though there would be a penalty attached to it, correct?
Yeah, so all the delinquent taxes are referred to York County Tax Claim Bureau. They're the delinquent tax collector. They do their processes to collect the tax.
Okay.
And, you know, if it gets too long in the game, then they'll proceed to tax sale.
What's too long in the game? Give me some kind of a heads up here.
Two years.
Two years? They're giving two years more?
About.
About?
About. But then it goes through a whole other process.
Red tape.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions on 303? Okay. I'm going to call the question then on item 303 specifically. So my intention is to talk about the three items that have been pulled, register a vote on them, and then come back to the rest of what was originally...
What do you want to come back to, Bill?
All right now, I want to ask for a motion for approval of item 303 to specifically vote on. You'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of voting in the affirmative for agenda item... The consent agenda, item 303, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That motion carries. Next order for discussion would be item 306, that being the library board appointments. I'll just start by saying my understanding is they are the mayor's appointments that then come to council with the mayor's recommendation for council to adopt them as council's recommendation.
Only one of those appointments on the agenda tonight is a mayor appointment. The other one is from the library board.
Thank you.
Amy Erhart is from the library board.
And...
Scott Rowland is my appointment.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And how many people can I ask you a question on that library board? We had originally just one representation at that time, right?
Correct.
And now we will have, from the Hanover area itself, we will have...
So as far as who lives in the borough, we will have Nat Fissell, who is now going to be the president.
Right.
And you.
Mm-hmm.
So that's two that are on the board that reside in the borough of Hanover.
Right. And then after this, we would have...
After that, we would have three. Amy lives in the borough.
Yeah, that's what... So we'd have a total of four.
She does, too. Yes. Total of four.
Before, we only had one.
Right.
And then some of those...
Of what's that number?
Out of seven.
Total of nine.
It's nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, out of nine.
So it will be four out of nine. Prior to that, it was...
Yeah, before, it was only like one.
Okay.
Okay. And also, we have other municipalities that pay money for support of the library, which they haven't been doing. But those people, we don't tend to have those on board. We have them from other areas outside of the support system, correct?
Well, actually, let's see, several of them don't even live in York County. We have one, two, three, four members live in Adams County.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Which isn't even in York County, which is the county that our library is for, York County Library System.
Okay. I just think that information is important for all of our council to know.
Any other comments on that before I call the question? Nothing on this side? Nothing further?
If you want to know why I consider...
I needed that clarified.
Well, part of the reason to why I considered Scott is he's pro-library, and he also is pro-borough. So I feel like he's a really good combination to have on the board, to speak to both with the current situation that they're in. I feel like he can be a voice of reason both ways, if that makes any sense.
This is the same Scott?
Yeah. I haven't met that guy.
Me, reason?
So...
Okay, anything further? I will ask for then the motion, I'll need to be councillor, not the mayor, sorry, for approval of agenda item 306.
Motion.
Councillor Hagberg, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second to the right. Pick one. All in favor of 306, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Can I exhume or whatever myself because I'm conflicted, or...
You've recused yourself. Yes, thank you.
Recused.
Exhumed was the wrong term.
That'll be next month. There were none opposed. I did ask, so that motion carries. I also have, flipping to page two, we have 307 to discuss, was mentioned. Who has a question on community?
That'd be me.
Okay. It's your question.
I thought this was rather an interesting situation here. So my first question is, is this a deal that was negotiated? Or did they just come up and say, I'm going to give you $20,000? Did someone negotiate this deal?
Yes.
Okay.
We are seeking out sponsors for various areas of the new building and for this building as well. Some of the people that we've approached already are more interested in supporting, you know, a room or the firing range or the workout room here in the police, you know, the police and emergency management side. So yes, so we have a whole program we put together. Eric and Valerie and I really worked very closely together to put this program together. We put some dollar amounts to certain areas of the building and certain aspects. So Community Aid is the first one that we've got, but we're actively speaking with four others, Eric.
We have four others that we're talking to right now, yeah.
Great. Okay.
I think the other point, if I could, just real quick, Carol, is one of the things that we take into consideration as we go through those negotiations is what other things does that entity bring to the borough? Community Aid actually gives us access to, I think, Chris, what is it? Once a year, we get access to a grant of like $20,000 or $30,000 that, specific to Hanover Borough. It's kind of ours for the taking, and we can use it in any way that helps the community out. Also, I think each quarter, they give us, what, $500 in gift cards?
So each quarter, they give $500 for the gift cards. Those gift cards come into the Department of Code Enforcement, and when we go out and we find families that are in need, we give them the gift cards. If they've been... Had a fire, okay, something like that, or we just find folks that are genuinely in need, then we give them the gift cards. They can go to Community Aid, get some things that they need, like clothing, things like that. And we also have a contact number at Community Aid that we can call the very next day and tell them that there's even more of a need for this family. They will sit down, they will work with the families, and see what other assistance that they can give, and then refer them to other places as well. And it's been a program that's been ongoing now for over a year. It's been very successful.
Okay, so all that was going on before any of this kitchen stuff was coming up? Yes. Okay.
We went through that, and then when this came in, I mean, you try to sort of balance things out a little bit, and they were bringing a lot to the table even outside of the building. So we said, you know, well, as we negotiated, we said, well, then that seems reasonable because of all of the other things you're doing. But certainly, another entity who may not bring that kind of value, we probably would hold the bar a little higher and say, well, you're not offering other things. So, you know, we're hopeful that you'll be more contributing.
Okay, well then, well then, I'm just going to go, and to my question, this kitchen that they're sponsoring, is this kitchen solely their kitchen that only they can use? Or they just get the plaques on it?
They get a door plaque that'll be, what is it, four by...
Yeah, it's like four by...
Six or eight or something. Small plaques at the door, at the entrance.
Right.
And it'll say, "Community Aid, Community Kitchen."
But it's not... When I was reading, it lent to me, is that just solely their kitchen now and only they can use it?
No.
For five years? We're talking about a five-year deal here.
No.
Not a one-year deal.
It's just naming, right?
Five years. Okay, but you can see my concern about the five-year. Okay, the other thing is, where it really drives me is, I mean, who's going to be the publicist for this place? I mean, my goodness, you guys are... You are making yourself very responsible for E through G. I mean, that's a lot. You almost have to hire a publicist for that. You're going to inform Community Aid of events scheduled. You're going to recognize and reinforce in some fashion the importance of Community Aid. You're going to do press releases for them, and there's more.
So what we will do, we have Valerie.
Yeah.
We will put together... We have Valerie, our communications manager. So what we will do is put together a list of all of our donors, and that'll be an email list. She'll hit click. It'll populate the emails. Anything that's going on, anything of importance, they'll get an email. They'll find out. If we've got a special event, we can invite them to the special event. When we do the ribbon cutting, they'll be done. That part will be finished. So they will be able to be at the ribbon cutting. We're also working with UTS. UTS is looking at sponsoring the administrative wing, which is another area that we have laid out for sponsorship. So all of this is community helping to offset the costs.
Oh, now I get it.
So anyone that... I know. Anyone that donates, any business that donates, will be invited to events that we do. So yes, you're reading...
It just sounds like they're... The way this is reading to me, they're holding you responsible to make sure that they have the advertising, that you're going to be... It just reads like you're working for them. And I just want to make sure it's a council person, that you guys, and you have enough to do. Now you are, you know, going to be responsible for making sure they get all kinds of information for $20,000 for five years.
So I don't think it's going to be as difficult as you think it will be. I'm just saying.
As it sounds.
As it sounds. Because, you know, like we do our newsletter four times a year. They'll be mentioned in the newsletter that they've made the donation. You know, there'll be probably a donor block. Here are our new donors for, you know, this time period. So, you know, things like that, it'll be easy for us to do. And I know UTS is very interested in doing sponsorship. Who are the other ones? Bright Speed, Comcast?
We're talking to Community Comcast. We're talking to Glow Fiber about things. UTS still...
Home Depot.
We're talking to Riley Welding, which is a Stewart and Tate company.
Home Depot?
Home Depot, we're talking to them as well, yeah.
I love the idea.
Part of the game, Carol, not to give away the trade secrets, is make it look like you're getting 10 pounds of things, but you got to pound of effort into it. You kind of... It's a little bit of a game where you sort of make things look like, man, you're getting all this stuff, but to Margie's point, it's a couple of claims.
It's just that it was for five years, and I was thinking, that's just a lot of work for the borough. I'm thinking of them, you know, too, other than...
Yeah.
I agree with the community.
To get it off the center, I believe the manager and staff is all on board, right? This is manager and staff approved, so... Are there any other reservations or questions?
Yeah, I have... Are we in... Is this in connection also with community area of churches?
Hanover, yeah. Council churches.
Is this in... Any week, nothing connect?
No, it's Community Aid.
Community Aid.
They're their own entity.
And we've been running this for how long, Chris?
The card program, we've been running for over a year now.
And you found it to be personally, you're involved in this?
To give you an example, about three weeks ago, around 9:30 at night, we had a pipe break in a multi-unit apartment building, and we had four apartment buildings that were affected. This was right before Christmas. And the family lost a bunch of clothing due to sewage and pipe leak, and we were able to assist them so they could go over and get things to keep them going, so they could get things laundered and stuff like that. So it's been a very successful program throughout the borough, and Community Aid's been a very strong partner with the borough and with the Department of Code Enforcement.
So we're looking for sponsors to help to strengthen this aid that we are going to provide, correct?
We're trying to offer the biggest, most robust facility we can give this community without spending more taxpayer dollars to do so.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to go on record. I appreciate Carol's concerns. You're very nice. Carol's so nice. Carol wants to make sure that the borough isn't working too hard. But I... Commendations to staff for doing this. I mean, it's... The community should be involved in this, and if you can get the people to give us some stuff and help. You're already working on your goal, getting... It's taking on partnerships, so you're already working on that goal. So thank you very much. The more money you can get, it's better for us.
It sounds like a motion.
It is a motion.
Is there a second?
And you've got a second.
All in favor, and again, this is 307. I signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? 307 carries. Lastly, we'll move into the separation... Separated discussion of 309, the designation of code official pursuant to 2018 IMPC. Sounds like... Who wants that? Chris?
You want to speak to that, Chris?
When you adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, you have to designate the code official that's going to be responsible for managing the code and enforcing the code. And then the other code officials underneath would be basically, as it states in the code, deputized to do so, to carry that out. With that being said, we updated the 2018 Property Maintenance Code to reflect the 2018 Fire Code and the 2018 building codes that we're currently operating under in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So with that being said, it goes without saying that we have to designate myself to be the person to enforce this code. Then I will keep a list of the other officers in the office that will be able to enforce the code, and we take it on from there. So it's more of a formality than anything.
And that's just because we adopted this 2018. I just wanted to make sure that that was...
Yes, ma'am. You are absolutely right.
This is just the way government has to do things. So is there a motion for 309?
Second.
And a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Coming back to the rest of council, which I have a motion for the overall approval. Could I request Councillor Up to reauthorize or re-initiate her motion for the consent agenda minus 303, 306, 307, and 309, which were just previously approved?
I make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion further on the consent agenda? All in favor of its approval, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. With that, we will move into 401, Parks and Rec. We have a resolution to rename West Hanover Street Park to Union Park. Who wants that one?
Matt, AJ?
Explain.
Oh, AJ.
So you have the resolution in your packet?
We do.
At the rec board meeting, Matt Jackson came forth. This is an effort, him and some volunteers who currently give history tours and other history kind of officials here in town, if you want to call them that, experts, brought forth several years ago. We didn't really have a mechanism to put that in place. Our comprehensive rec plan laid out that mechanism where he could take that to the borough manager. The borough manager then sends that to the rec board. They came and talked before the rec board about the highlights there, and basically the Union Calvary chasing the Confederates, specifically Colonel Jeb Stuart, out through the general area of West Hanover Street Park, jumped across the creek. And for that reason, they would like to highlight that, which was also recommended as one of the things we do in our comprehensive plan, to highlight those historical areas in town and tie them in with existing amenities that we have. And therefore, they have requested the name change to Union Park.
I would make a motion to further that. Second.
I'll second it.
I want to encourage any discussion on this because this has been around for a while, so if there is any...
I'd like to see the, you know, Battle Hanover theme.
The troops.
Have it be a theme, you know, Battle Hanover. You know, so I think it's good.
Oh, this is...
Anybody on this side? Comments?
Beyond that, it's down the path, Hanover Street.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second? Both on this side?
Yes, I have Scott and Chuck.
Okay. All in favor of 401, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. 401 is approved. Thank you, sir. We'll move into five, the first being 501, Ratified Building Construction Change Order Updates. Mr. Mainz is coming forward.
Yeah, I can certainly answer any specific questions you have on these. I think the one I'd like to call attention to certainly is the largest one of those change orders. So what this is, is this is an opportunity for us to be proactive. This is an opportunity for us to actually do something that's going to save taxpayers in the long run. We have a commercial roofer who's already going to be on the roof. As we're up there now, this is the time, if we see other things that we can fix on that roof and make better, extend the life of that roof, this is the time to do it. If we wait to do it, we're going to be subject to inflation. We're going to have mobilization and demobilization costs that we're going to have to add to it. We're going to be subject separately to prevailing wages for it. And so the idea and the theory behind this is, this is an opportunity to get in front of something. If we've all learned our lesson, certainly from the library and the roof issues we've had there, this is what you need to do. You need to get things buttoned up. We don't want to spend money down below and then have it leak and ruin those things that we just fixed.
Well, I think we've learned our lesson here also.
Yeah.
Where it was repaired over and over and over again, and it should have had a complete renewal, correct?
Right. Does anyone have any specific questions? Director of Engineering, Mr. Mainz, on any of the other items?
over and over again, and it should have had a complete renewal.
Right. Does anyone have any specific questions, Director of Engineering, Mr. Maines, on any of the other items?
So, okay, the only other question I have is on the roof. There was no, there's no problems at this time, but you see future problems that will crop up and you're trying to get ahead of the game.
Absolutely.
By trying to do it now rather than later. Is that what you're saying?
And, yes, that's absolutely right. And to offset some of that, what we actually did as staff is we went back and revisited the entire scope of things that were going to be done on the roof to say, you know what? Do we need all of that stuff? We pulled some things out to help offset the cost so that we could do this in the most cost-effective manner possible.
Counselor Rowland, you were going to add the facilities?
What I was going to add to it, as Chairman of Building and Grounds, what we're doing here is the existing membrane that's on the, the rubber membrane that's on the roof is in good shape. And essentially, what we're doing here is we're renewing the joints and the protrusion, what they call them witches hats, where the, you know, pipes come through the roof. We're replacing all of those pieces. So the rubber, which is 95% of the roof surface membrane is in good shape. And what Eric's referring to here, we're just going to replace the tape and the seams and so forth. So we should be able to reasonably expect 20-ish more years out of this roof.
What is the normal wear for a rubber roof?
The normal wear is...
The normal, the normal life, that's what life?
I think it's generally between 20 and 30 years.
30, so this will extend that life of that roof?
This extends it by attacking the areas where a roof starts to fail first, which is the seams, the projections, and those things. That's where your roof generally starts to fail first. And so that's specifically what we're going after.
All right, thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, all in favor of 501?
Aye.
Second, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We'll move into 502, Committee Goals. Who's got that one from staff, or we on our own there?
Well, did you all look over the goals that we have outlined for this committee? I mean, it's the whole of council because these are things that you all, you know, work on every month. If you've looked at these and you have any specific questions, some of you provided some of these goals for us. Some of them are staff, you know, sponsored, brought forward. But if you have any questions, I can answer questions, or if you'd like to see anything updated or changed or added, let us know. This, the goals will go back to governance. They're having a meeting next month, Chairman, and they don't normally have one, they usually have it every other month, but they're having one next month, and we'll go over the goals at that point in time from all the committees.
I think they're good. I think they're, you know, everybody's got to realize, these are, you know, 30,000-foot things that are trying to tie everything together. So these should drive implementation down at our individual committees or departments or whatever subdivisions that you want to use. But I think they're, they're good.
The only thing that I'm getting, Bill, from the people that have given me calls and talked with me, is the excess of that 200 and about quarter of a million dollars for the new furniture and things. And I think it's time, since we're on video, to understand it better because I believe, Carol, you brought up about saving money and what we're saving to take over to the other building and why the cost. I need to have an explanation for at least my ward.
I'm struggling to see how that fits here, sorry.
What?
I'm struggling to see how that fits with the goals.
Well, because your first goal is to ensure that the borough makes best use of available funds for projects.
Okay, so under that, you want to just get clarification?
And under that, yes, is where I've been getting a lot of questions. And the questions are on the expenditure for the new furniture and stuff that's going in, not what we're doing now because that's all being explained by Eric, you know. But I am still getting hit.
You want to staff commentary?
I talk with Margie, I'm still getting calls on that.
Staff commentary on the $200,000 furniture expenditure?
Yeah, they were, they're upset about that.
Okay, Manager Lewis?
Yep, I want Margie to answer.
So I had heard some things, just let me do some clarification. I had heard some things about, you know, throwing everything away from this building. That is not the case. I don't know where that came from. So if you're hearing that, you know, I don't know where that's coming from. We're not throwing everything away from this building.
And I didn't ask, no.
No, but I did, I heard that too. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
That is not the case. We are taking the usable pieces across the street with us, and we are purchasing some things. I think you'll be pleased to know that it, I think it will come in well under that amount of money that's been allocated in the budget. It's going to come in probably around half of that.
So it's going to be half of the 200 and some?
I'm not going to commit completely to half, but approximately, okay?
It's a target.
You'll know, you'll know when I know, okay?
Okay.
What the amount is.
Margie, please make sure these chairs disappear.
Sure. You got it.
Thank you. No problem.
Margie, some of the equipment we're buying is used, too.
And some things we're buying used, some things are, yes, new, and some things need to be removed and destroyed because it's very bad shape. So I think, like I said, I think you'll be pleased, but I want you to know that we're not just throwing things away. We have an obligation, anything that has any value, we have to sell it. We can't simply throw things away. AJ works on that program every single year where, you know, items that have value, his team, his staff puts places on municipal bid, and we get some money back for it. So anything that has value will be saved. Anything that has no value and no, no use will not be, it will be disposed of.
Disposed of or put up for auction or sale or something?
Anything that has value will be put up for sale. Anything that does not have value will not sell, and they know what will sell and what won't sell on municipal bid.
Right, and one of the questions they get are about these tables. And they're wondering why these aren't being taken over and used for our meetings and that we're building, and hey, I'm getting it, it's around town, we might as well face it and explain it.
These won't be needed over there.
Right, we're not going to. And they want to know why we're putting, how much money we're putting into the new seating arrangement, Barb's smiling, the seating arrangement over on Frederick Street. They feel that there is quite a bit of expense in that. And so, you know, I just want to address these things so that the people understand.
If there's any value in these tables, they'll be sold.
Okay.
Because I don't think there's a place for them. Chad may have a need for one or two of them in this building here.
Right.
We may have a need for one of them in the building there, perhaps. Anything that has value will be sold, and that money will help to offset the costs.
Okay, because they're asking...
So we also are working on a sponsorship for council chambers that will help to offset that.
Right, I'm getting all kinds of amounts for the new area over on Frederick Street that will seat us as a council. And I'll tell you, there's some wild numbers out there.
I don't, I don't know where they're getting those numbers.
What numbers are we talking about, though? Can we, can we give to the people what that cost will be? That's the one place where they're hitting me the most.
We had, we had identified an amount because of a grant that we were seeking. You folks approved the project when it was presented to us.
Okay.
And the amount, we had the council chamber separated out, Eric, 116,000 was what the added amount?
When we were seeking the grant, the number for it as a standalone project was, I think, around 400,000 or something like that. The number that came, that came in with the actual construction was closer to 200,000.
It was less than.
But that's the entire room. That's not, that's not the sitting up area, it's not $200,000 of value. It's all, it's the lighting, it's the IT, it's the system that these guys operate for us so that we can hear.
That's what I think the people need to hear because they, they were getting, okay, there is a roaring number out there, okay, that it was really very high, close to 200, just for that area. And that's where we have to clarify things.
Yeah, understood.
So everything, including the lighting, audio, everything in that building is included in that grant.
And we're seeking a sponsor for that.
Okay, thank you. Did we have to have an equal balance to match that? Do we have to match that grant?
So that grant is a, no, that's LSA. LSA is not a matching grant.
Okay, so we didn't have a matching grant?
No.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Okay, it's still my job to make sure we stay on track here. And that, I'm going to come back to Counselor Rowland, sound like you were making a motion to approve the recommended goals.
Absolutely, to approve 5.02, the 25 recommended committee goals.
Thank you, sir. And there's a second somewhere?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of 502, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Do we have any reports of council committees or other public bodies to enter at this time? Any management reports to highlight that aren't in the packet? Correspondence and information? I'll take it to our final public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Holt, you're up first again.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll just say, your vote on the library appointments is disappointing. There are, there are members of this council who recuse themselves, who step away from their official capacities when they have conflicts, and they've done it. But unfortunately, this isn't one of them. And if this, if the library Board of Governors was a philanthropic group of people who were writing checks for $200,000 to help finance the decisions they're making instead of putting it off on the taxpayers, they could make any rules they want, but they're playing with the taxpayers' dollars. And I just find it amazing that, I think, with, a lot of these issues coming up with 33 Frederick and some of these other issues with the budget could have been addressed if you had discussed this project in some of your board council committee meetings. There were plenty of opportunities, there were numerous council meeting, committee meetings that were canceled because we didn't have any business, is what I was told. And I just think, there should have been a public hearing on this, and there should have been some detailed public discussion in the committee meetings. You had ample time, and you should have made ample time. And so I think a lot of these issues you're facing are your own making. I apologize, I don't know what else to say. Finally, I, I'm still yet to get an answer to the message I sent you, the correspondence I sent you, you know, there's just been no reply. I've heard all the excuses about why I can't get a reply, and I'm sure you got explanations from the staff. You know, he doesn't understand it, he doesn't know how it goes, oh, yeah, I'm sure, you know. I struggle at times to understand some things. But I just don't know how you can be unresponsive. And the, and if it was just me, I wouldn't find it so annoying. What truly annoys me is the number of people who have come here and talked to you, the number of people who brought issues, and they got, they walked out of here and later they said, I got no response, I got no answer. And, and I think, you know, I'll just borrow the words of Justice Thurgood Marshall, who said, "This is our country, this is our democracy, this is our government." And I just think you need to think about that as you look at how you're spending the taxpayers' dollars and the policies that we have to live with when other people go home to other communities and don't have to live with the decisions that are made. Thank you.
Bill, could I have your attention on this issue? I did have, and I did talk to...
Counselor Funk, I'm...
I did talk to Margie about this.
Yeah, we're, we're in public comment, not Counselor comment.
I know, but this quiets me because I have an objection, I see Bob over there not getting that response he should have.
This is, this is for you to listen, not to comment.
This is why when it old and new business brought back into play, because he hasn't gotten a response. I'm a councilman, but why isn't he getting...
It is, but council rules itself, not one counselor, and I'm in effect...
I am one council out of 10. But I know that several are sitting here now, wondering why he didn't get the response he should have. He applied, and the response was given to us. Can we give him the response? Can one of us step forward and let him know why he didn't get that response?
Ma'am, you have the floor, you're speaking, you give the gentleman a response. You're invited to give him a response.
I can give him what I was giving.
Give him a response.
I can give that to him.
Give him your response.
Robert, I will meet with you afterwards and give you a response. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandy, Sandy Mau.
Mr. Holt, I wasn't prepared to address your situation here tonight. I spent three days going through library...
You should address it.
Yeah, you need to address Counsel Sandy. Sorry, you can speak to him afterwards or before.
Speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you.
I spent three days going through library minutes and have discovered, I'll just call them distortions.
Call into the microphone, please.
So I'll, I'll say that for next week. But there is a $500,000 item that has been misleading. So we'll address that next week. Today, I've been noticing people referencing packets in your packets. So this is information that you have already decided on, and no...
Information.
Okay, information. But that information isn't being shared with the public?
Yes, it is.
How so?
Manager, I'll allow the question.
We, we send out a packet on sometimes Fridays, sometimes Mondays. We're required to do it 24 hours in advance of the meeting. So prior to 24 hours in advance of this meeting, a packet is delivered via email to the board, and it is placed online, the same packet, the same information is placed online for the public to read.
I only see agenda and the weeks.
Behind the first two or three pages of agenda is the rest of this, all of this.
Eighty pages?
Eighty, 100, 120 pages sometimes.
Because my concern is, the use of the packets has now moved to the committees. So you were at the Library Governance Committee, and the report coming from the internal manager was not shared with us. It was in the packet. And I think when you were telling us to go to these committee meetings, that's where we get our questions answered, our questions answered.
The Board of Governors is not us.
But it was.
Of the library.
It should have been, it was available as well. The information for the Board of Governors meeting was also posted.
We post the agenda only.
Okay.
For the Board of Governors, but for the Finance and Personnel Committee and Council, the entire packet is posted, and you can look back through them. They're listed with the agendas, where it says agenda, and they're all bookmarked within it.
All right, we'll do.
So you can look them up from...
Okay. My second concern, why are you going to the extent of the cost replacing the wallpaper with paint when there were 20 rolls of wallpaper left to take care of issues with the wallpaper? And a lot of people noticed me going around and checking how that wallpaper peeled off. In the interest of transparency, my grandfather hung wallpaper for a living up until I was about 10 years old. And the things that I saw in that library were not true to wallpaper hanging. So I have an estimate only on the paint. If you get the cheapest paint, you're looking at $2,300. And that, the most, well, not the most expensive, but like middle range is like $13,255, and that's without sealing and molding. Next item is the fair share. I think the word subsidy was given to me at the last meeting. I believe that the subsidy should be separated on the ledgers from fair share in order to give an accurate representation to our neighbors who are using the library. If you're subsidizing, that's one thing. If you're using a calculation that I looked at online, that's a totally different thing. And then lastly, the sponsorships. That's a great idea, as long as these people who are stepping forward to make these sponsors are not expecting something in return. I hope they're not getting special, special treatment if they come before council. That's everything.
Okay. And lastly, in the room, we have Grace Mullin.
Conclusion sounds quite ominous.
No pressure, Grace, yeah.
None at all.
To wrap it up.
Okay, well, I've got to explain to you about something. There is a great Mother Goose chart in the sky, particularly right here over Hanover. And when you're good kids, you get gold stars put on your Mother Goose chart. When you are not good responsive guy, responsive, responsive guys, you do not get gold stars. Now, we're going to give Barbara Rupp an incredible gold star. Not only does she answer my emails, but she's got these two junior representatives who talk to me. When I email them, they answer me. When I call them, they answer me. Holy Christmas, yay, borough! Margie answers me. In fact, Margie and, I always forget names, even though I'm saying it, Matt and, and blah, blah, blah. I had, we had a crisis on Friday, partially because I made this big plan in November, and I'm a little hyper about things. I kept planning, and everyone else thought I could fall asleep through Christmas, and I annoyed everyone and got everyone upset. But it's all worked out because Margie and Matt said, "Get into my office, Monday morning, 10 o'clock." They didn't say it quite that way, but, and so I was there. But they're communicating, and it's phenomenal, and I love it. But the negative side is, generally, when I write, and I've got all of your emails, and I think I have them correct, and I email, well, my response rate is not 25%.
Did I not call you back?
Say that again.
Did I not call you back?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
That's 25%. You did, two people.
Does he get a gold star?
Yes, I'm sorry, did I forget to give a gold? And Scott gets a gold star.
Why?
And so does Carol, and so does Barbara.
Right.
The mayor has, always gets gold stars, but she didn't this time. But I'm not sure I asked her to, I can't remember. I probably didn't. Oh, the point is, I'm trying to get as many of you as possible to just stop in from 1 to 3 on Monday, particularly you, Mayor, because I've been...
I got a calendar invite from Scott, I've already responded, yes.
Oh, well, it didn't get to me. Because I've told everyone, you're going to be there, and I'm going to look like the village idiot if you don't come up. Okay? Because a lot of people, the people I'm talking to who are going to this project, they're mostly from these three churches that are doing our seniors, they're excited to see you guys. So if you can put it in your schedule, if you just drop by between 1 and 3, you don't need to stay there. We don't, we don't exactly have tons of stuff to do. You don't need to help, except to help them find out which ward they're in. Anyway, my point is, I, if I were you, Margie, I would take in charge of this, and I would get on all their emails, this little button that they can push that says, when constituents write them, you can get a little, I can't do it, computers, I don't get along, but that says, "Thank you for your email, and I will get back at my earliest conveni," I love hearing from my constituents, "I will get back to you at my earliest conveniences." Of course, then they have to follow through. But that was my suggestion for the, for the evening, that, you're getting more and more gold stars, but, you know, the more responsive we get, and you wouldn't believe, the seniors are really coming because they're excited to meet some of you guys. It's a big deal to some people. We are going to have to, I'm going to have the map there because none of them know what ward they're in, I hate to tell you, but that was, I put the big map up at the senior center, and I, I put, gave them thumbtacks, and I tried to have them putting the tax where their wards were so they would know who their representatives...
They know where they vote, right?
Well, no. I, I don't know, I don't know that. I should say that, but I don't know. But in any case, they couldn't put the tax under their representative, so anyway. It's a work in process. If we didn't, if we didn't have a place to go forward, life would be dull. Thanks for your time.
Okay, is there anybody online community... Okay, is there anybody online, community, media that would like to address council for the last shot?
If you're joining us in the room, you're free to unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Go with the guessing.
Okay, final public comment and request a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Council Hagberg, a second?
A second.
Thank you, Council Hagberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For adjourning, yes?